The August 8, 2022, meeting of the Waynesboro City Council to order. Mr. Allen, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the meeting tonight, and thank you all for attending. We've got a public hearing tonight, and if you wish to speak at the public hearing, there's a sign up sheet in the back. If you would, when you sign up, make sure you sign up for the public hearing, because there's a second sheet in the back for our citizen comment period. So two sheets in the back, one for public hearing, one for citizen comment, if you wanted to sign up and speak at either. Item number three is the adoption of our meeting agenda. The city manager requests requested that we change a couple of items on here, add to our closed meeting and add another part to it. So Mr. Hamp, would you tell us what we've got?
Yes, sir. One item will be a new item 3A, which will be consider adopting by resolution, a remote participation policy. This is a policy required under the Freedom of Information Act and open meeting laws in the Commonwealth, and that will facilitate the ability of a council member to participate remotely. And since we have an individual participating remotely this evening, please do that immediately following this little presentation here. And then secondly, I have a second item to include in our closed session that relates to a personnel matter with an update from staff or council. So as is the practice, we'll need to vote to amend, consider the amendment to the agenda, and then vote to adopt the amended agenda.
So do we have a motion to amend the agenda?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, sir. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. And for those that are here, Ms. Williams couldn't attend tonight in person, so she's here virtually on the computer. So Ms. Williams is here, so you'll hear me say a 5-0 vote. All five of us are here. Now we have amended the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? All in favor, say aye. No. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen.
And I will second that.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, sir. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. All right, and then item number four is matters for mayor. I was...
Let's do the 3A.
We need to do 3A.
Oh, I thought we did...
We have to have the actual.
All right, so is there a motion to adopt amendment 3A, which is a resolution to permit us to do virtual meetings, basically what it is, correct?
We need the present. It lets you, if there's a quorum physically present, which there is, and the person on the phone identifies where they're from, which I'm going to ask Ms. Williams to do after this is, assuming this is adopted, and state either the nature of the personal matter, as to why she's not physically present, or that there's a medical condition or disability preventing her physical attendance, and then you don't have to disclose any more than that, so that that can be in our minutes. But that's what it does.
Okay.
You know, during COVID, we could meet remotely. You know, that's not, the emergency orders from the governor are over now, but this is a way to have a couple of members up to two that could appear remotely under certain circumstances.
Perfect. Is there a motion to approve amendment 3A?
Well, it's not an amendment, it's just a resolution.
A resolution.
Yeah, the resolution adopting remote participation policy, council.
Okay.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, sir.
I will second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you vote, Lana?
I did, I said aye.
Motion carries 5-0. It's kind of hard to hear that computer.
All right, now we have to go to formality.
Now we're good, and if just Vice Mayor Williams, if you could just state the location of where you are, and either the nature of the personal matter, or that it's a medical condition or disability is the reason why you're not physically present.
Yes, this is Vice Mayor Lana Williams. I am participating from my home residence, and it is for medical reasons.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lana. All right, item number four is matters for mayor. I don't have a lot this week, but I do want to bring out that August is National Farmers Market Month. We have a farmer's market down on our main street. I would encourage everybody, especially being produce is coming in now, to visit our farmer market on the weekend and fill up the refrigerators cabinets and buy fresh fruit from our local farmers. Item five is matters from council members.
You know I do.
Dr. Haas, sir.
Still can't see my face. We are still red in Augusta County. The good news is surrounding counties. As of my check earlier today, Rockingham County had turned green again. The surrounding counties are all yellow. So I hope that harbors, is a good harbinger that we will be turning yellow and then eventually green. An observation, being in the medical field, I get phone calls when I'm on call, or I get word from my patients. A lot of folks are testing at home. And unless that gets reported through their physician, that doesn't get put into our statistics. So that's just an interesting observation, that, you know, we probably all have had friends or family or folks we know that have tested at home. So that even though we might see those numbers falling from the Department of Health standpoint, that does not necessarily mean our numbers are falling as far as we'd like. So keeping in mind common sense. The second thing, I would like to say good luck. School starts tomorrow in Waynesboro. We are getting our students back to school. So both from a safety standpoint, remember the school buses will be out in the morning, but also then just for all the students and families that have been ready to get back, or looking forward to get back, or really worried about getting back, and our teachers, good luck to everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, sir. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda? All right, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number seven is to hold a public hearing considering adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to commence condemnation proceedings for real property at Zero White Bridge Road, Waynesboro, Virginia, for stormwater management facility. Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir. The subject property is identified as a preferred location for a stormwater project, and this would be a stormwater quality enhancement project. And the need for the project originates out of the TMDL, and that's the Total Maximum Daily Load Requirements associated with the city's MS4 permit. TMDL restricts the amount of pollution from runoff. In this case, it's primarily nitrogen and phosphorus that the city can discharge into a natural waterway. The TMDL requirements, depending on what type of projects are available, can be one of the more expensive components or requirements of the MS4 permit. This project is proposed on the subject parcel because it was, one, identified as cost efficient as to its removal rates; two, it's in an area of an existing detention, excuse me, detention pond that was not being adequately maintained; and three, the land generally is not well suited or planned for additional new development. Primary design was confirmed that this was in an appropriate location, and we moved the staff, that is, moved towards the right of way phase of the project, which is obtaining the property. We approached the owner with several offers to achieve a negotiated purchase, and we've been unsuccessful in that regard. And again, we believe, the staff believes, and I concur, that the opportunities to make improvements and meet the requirements under our permit are exemplary in this location. And for that reason, I recommend that we pursue acquiring the property through condemnation. We'll hold a public hearing this evening, and if council wishes to move forward with the condemnation process, you'll adopt a resolution authorizing me to do so. Once we start that process, there'll be a 30-day notice of intent period. We'll issue a letter to the property owner. Following that, our attorneys will file a certificate of take with the circuit court and provide payment on the last offer to the property owner, which was the assessed value. If the judge determines that, that, and excuse me, Mr. Sam's clarified during our work session that at that point, the property becomes ours or the city's, and we can move forward with confidence pursuing the project. If the judge determines that that price is inadequate, he can order a hearing or a trial be held, and a new price might be established presumably higher than the one that's been paid. And so if that's the case, then the city would be obligated to pay whatever marginal increase there would be. Again, I would, personally, I would say that it wouldn't recommend voting yes on this resolution unless you're comfortable and confident in moving forward with a condemnation process. It is possible that during the 30-day notice of intent period, the owner might seek to negotiate a purchase, but I think it's better to assume that he will not and will end up taking the property through condemnation, which, again, I would emphasize to folks, does involve payment for the property. It just is not a negotiated price.
Any questions for Mr. Hamp? Okay. I hereby open the public hearing on a resolution authorizing the city manager to commence condemnation proceedings for real property at Zero White Bridge Road, Waynesboro, Virginia.
Nobody has signed up to speak, sir.
Okay. I hereby close the public hearing and ask, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, sir. Is there any discussion amongst council? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight is to receive a report on recently completed downtown market study redevelopment plan from Crystal Morpheus, founder and CEO of C E C D.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, redevelopment, rebirth, and renaissance are words often used when discussing downtown. In fact, redevelopment of downtown is mentioned in virtually every federal, state, and local planning or economic development report. Although the pandemic caused a slight stall in the last decade, our downtown has experienced a renewed energy, reduced vacancy, and some modest growth. Entertainment, museums, eating establishments, retail, and services all have opened. But we still have more to do. Earlier this year, we were successful in obtaining a grant from the Commonwealth of Virginia through the Department of Housing and Community Development, D H C D, to assist with some of the elements necessary to plan for redevelopment and to assist in preparing for a large I R F grant, which is next on the agenda. As detailed in your briefing material, we've identified blighted buildings along West Main Street, retained an expert to review and provide a report, not only on those buildings, but also as a general market study of the downtown area that can be used in other applications. Tonight, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, Mr. and Ms. Crystal Morpheus, President of Creative Economic Development, is here to present that report. And just a reminder to you and to those listening, the complete report can be found on the economic development website, which is waynesboro business dot com in the document center section. Crystal?
Thank you. It's good to be back in front of this council again, although the last time I was here was pre-pandemic, so that seems like more ages ago. If you were to go back to that time, we had actually completed a corridor redevelopment study. It was part of my company's annual give back project. We give away one consulting project a year, and the city of Waynesboro was the recipient in that year. And we studied the redevelopment of the corridor from downtown to the intersection of the Blue Ridge Parkway and Shenandoah National Park. And it was really good to see all the activity in downtown, even through the pandemic. I'll talk about the study process and the outcome, but it's very nice to be back and see an active downtown with a lot of things happening. I do want to start off with that the purpose of this project is really assisting your E D A and downtown property owners. We studied five specific properties in this project, and the purpose is to develop a marketing campaign to attract new business and really developing reuse of those five identified properties in need of redevelopment to bring more activity to downtown. These are the five properties that we examined on West Main Street, 322, 411, 540, 600, and 620 West Main Street. And as Mr. Hitchens said, he's going to talk to you about the next step in this process, which is an I R F grant. And it's nice to see the city is taking this work and really putting into place tonight. I want to lead off by talking about the planned developments. You all, of course, are more familiar than I am with all the planned developments, but they're really to be leveraged for more activity in downtown. I cannot overstate, as you know, the importance of the new Museum of Natural History in the Waynesboro campus and the tens of thousands of visitors that that will bring to your city in addition to the visitors that are already here. If you add to that the redesign of your park and the preserve area, Sunset Park Trails, the Leggett Building Development, which is underway. And by the way, we met in the E D A office before this meeting, and I saw the schematic of it, and it just looks phenomenal. It's going to be a great cornerstone to downtown. And there are new retail businesses that have opened. So you have all this planned development ready to be leveraged for more activity in downtown. That's really the jumping off point for this study. We did some background research. We did our quantitative analysis as well as qualitative analysis. And as you know, taxable retail sales have been on the incline over the last few years. So you see more money being spent in downtown. Really, through the pandemic, people have rediscovered small towns and have enjoyed traveling to and spending money in small towns, and that trend is expected to continue. So that's a real positive thing for us to hang our hat in terms of data on how downtown is growing. We also did a retail leakage analysis to tell us where there are opportunities for new business development in Waynesboro. And if you think about leakage as the amount of dollars that are leaking from your economy, so there is a consumer spending study that says, based on the population and income of the city, X amount of dollars should be spent here, but they're not. They're being spent in other places. So the difference between what they could be spending here and what is actually being spent is that retail leakage, dollars leaking out of your community. So here are some of the opportunities that we really honed in on. They lump in this research that we gather, food services and drinking places, restaurants, if you will, at $25 million of leakage. So as you know, there is room in the local economy for more restaurants to develop, especially with these tens of thousands of new visitors coming. Another one that we closed in on was sporting goods, hobby books, and music stores. So retail stores, $4 million of leakage. Specialty food is another one that we like to see. If you think of people coming to the museum, then stopping by a bakery or some other specialty food store after the museum visit and spending money, but you'll see some categories of retail leakage. But we honed in on a few that we think have real potential for downtown. I'll also say in terms, in addition to the quantitative analysis, we also did qualitative research. We interviewed several business owners in the downtown area and asked them about their business. Has it been growing? Has it been declining? Where do you see market opportunities? What's the customer profile of your business? Have you thought about starting other businesses? Do you have other businesses in other locations? This is a second location. We asked a lot of questions, and they're all very positive on the Waynesboro market. That was something that stood out to me. Even very small retailers that may have been struggling in 2020 see the opportunities that are emerging here, and they have planned investments for the future. So outside of the data, we heard stories from people who are working and operating in Waynesboro that are very positive. So we took those both into consideration. For each one of these properties in the written report that is available, you'll see we've attached some market flyers that talk about the properties and some redevelopment opportunities. At 322, which is next to the Leggett redevelopment, this is an ideal retail reuse. It has been a retail operation in the past. If you think about the foot traffic that is in that part of downtown, it is ideal for retail reuse. So if you go back to that retail leakage, sporting goods, hobbies, books, things like that, would be an ideal use for this. So we've created this flyer that the E D A and the property owner can use to talk about this redevelopment opportunity and some of the building specifications, as well as the retail market highlight. Very similar to that is 411 West Main Street, which also has a retail opportunity because of the foot traffic and just the way the property is laid out, and the spacing that is laid out. And I know the city has been supportive of the redevelopment intentions of these property owners. You'll see their marketing flyer has very similar information on it as well for retail. 544 is a little bit different. If you think about that building layout, it would be ideal for a restaurant, the way that the building on the inside is broken up. They also have some space in the rear that would be ideal for outdoor event space. It is closer to the theater, where people that are coming to the theater could walk to dine. It is also closer to some professional office foot traffic, where people could dine as well. So that would be an ideal use. And again, we highlight some market information that the property owner and the E D A can use to market this property. A little bit different, nearby, well, next door, actually, but a little bit different than retail is the opportunity for lodging in this facility. It would make an ideal bed and breakfast location. Again, people coming to the theater would have lodging nearby. It is in an area where business travelers and the professionals, seeking professional services in that end of town could find lodging there. So we do have some market highlights on this flyer as well that talks about lodging and hospitality and some of the market opportunities that are available. And then at 620 West Main Street, there is a developer there. There's an interest in office space and professional office space for this property. And again, that would be an ideal use, considering the part of downtown where it is, but it's very walkable to restaurants. If people are working in this office, they could walk to restaurants. They could walk to shops as well. So there's more information in the detailed report. But I want to talk about our recommendations for the city's support of this property redevelopment. First area of support is in this column of planning. Think about things the city can do to help plan for redevelopment. And you're already doing some of that with the follow on requests for the grant assistance that would help with engineering support. You've already done that in the past. The city could also pay for some of the costs for individual financial studies. Some of these property owners may be unaware of how to tap into financing and how that financing can then be leveraged into redevelopment. You can connect them to other planning resources that are available for redevelopment. Another concept is to gather a consortium of service providers who can offer some pro bono hours, like sometimes you do for business plan competitions and for entrepreneurs, who can help them spark ideas for redevelopment. One other concept is some funding for incubator or cowork space. And I'll mention again, another opportunity for the city is to help kind of jumpstart that. But the city could sponsor through grants, for example, identifying a grant to do feasibility analysis for some cowork space, particularly maybe in that office building that's being redeveloped. And the housing could be a piece of it as well for some of these properties, and asking that housing study consultant who completed the housing study for the city recently to do a further assessment of potential upper floor residential. At least one of the property owners has interest in some upper floor residential. Some additional things the city could do. One is continue to invest in amenities. When I was here just a few years ago, talking to you about the regional visitor center concept at the location of the Blue Ridge Parkway and the Appalachia Trail, and how a regional visitor center in that area and along that corridor in particular could really be a boon, drawing people off and then directing them into downtown. So I'd encourage you not to lose sight of that potential, as well as other amenities, like you're doing with the parks and the trails and the preserve, those things that will draw more people to downtown. I mentioned the regional visitor center. Additional property owner education about some of the financing and grant programs that are available to them. Your E D A has done a really good job of offering technical assistance through their agency and through their resource partners to property owners. But continuing to educate them on the technical assistance that's available is important. And the industrial revitalization fund, which you're going to talk about in just a couple of minutes. You could increase the loan amount of the city's revolving loan and also extend the term and maintain a low interest rate that could help property owners in redevelopment. So just really expanding on a tool that the city already has. This next bullet about possibly renting some space in an office building, some cities have done this, where a developer is redeveloping some office space. The city would guarantee to lease X number of square feet for some years that would give the developer a boost in the redevelopment. Some cities have used that for city office space, but some have also used it to launch an incubator or some cowork space and to really help jumpstart that office redevelopment project. So I can share some examples with you on that. Some other examples are guaranteeing rooms at a lodging facility, for example, because the city oftentimes has vendors that are coming in to do business with the city, and you could guarantee some lodging. Also, you can consider a vacant building grant program that would extend the city's toolbox for economic development. And the last one is one I've talked with the E D A about. There are some jurisdictions that have offered some rent subsidy incentive grants to buildings that are being redeveloped to draw more foot traffic into downtown. And I can share more information about that if you'd like. The key thing the E D A can do is really to help market these properties. So we have a set of recommendations for digital outreach and direct outreach events to help property owners market these properties for tenants and potentially to developers. So we have some suggestions about new pages on the website and social media campaigns and e-communications and e-marketing, but also some direct outreach examples and events, which are things like familiarization tours, installing more storefront displays, art projects in unused spaces that activate those spaces and give them a vision for what it could be. Pop-up events is another way to showcase opportunities at vacant properties. And then the familiarization tour for real estate developers and realtors. It's really making people aware of the development opportunity. And your E D A is the chief marketer of the city in development opportunities. This falls right under their program of work. We do have a budget recommendation to expand the city's marketing efforts specifically for the revitalization of downtown, and that would cover both the digital outreach and the events that we've proposed. So some of the next steps are to endorse the recommendations for this study. Your next item on the agenda talks about the I R F grant and how it can be a follow on to this. Allocate some of that budget that we mentioned for additional marketing and promotion to draw attention to those properties for revitalization, and then staff to get to work on all this. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Must have did I...
Oh, thank you.
Actually, I do that, I was just looking for the right page. On your graph of Waynesboro taxable sales. Well, thank you very much, to start with. That was a great presentation. Was that defined as just downtown, or was that...
That's a city figure.
That's what I figured, but I wanted to make sure.
Yes, from the Department of Taxation, that's right.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. I look forward to coming back soon and seeing all the great things that are happening in Waynesboro.
All right.
All right, that was all the lead in for item number nine now.
That was all the lead-in for item number nine now. Item number nine is to receive information about two applications to the Commonwealth Industrial Revitalization Fund and consider adopting a resolution of support for each project. Mr. Hitchens is back on deck.
Mr. Mayor and members of council again. As the name implies, the Industrial Revitalization Fund is a program offered by DHCD to leverage local and private resources to redevelop vacant and deteriorated industrial and commercial properties. It's typically an annual grant, which is very highly competitive among municipalities in the Commonwealth and of course, based on general assembly of funding. Typically municipalities are allowed to apply for one project with a maximum of $600,000 in the grant or the loan fund. In 2022, we have a unique opportunity to apply for up to two projects for up to $5 million. Using the information that we just heard about from the IRF planning grant report, we discussed and offered to partner with the owners of the five buildings mentioned and also in four other buildings who we've talked to previously about redeveloping their properties. We asked the interested parties to complete a short form of interest explaining their project, their match, their commitment, et cetera, and we received three project forms totaling $6.4 million. City staff reviewed those three applications and used the DHCD criteria that they're going to use to evaluate our application and pared that down to the two projects totaling $5 million that we'll talk about in a moment. We're working with the owners of the former Leggitts Department Store at 320 West Main Street and the owners of the former Hyman's Department Store at 411 West Main Street. One of the owners of 411 West Main Street is here tonight. We are seeking a resolution of support for these two applications. While we're still finalizing the applications, they are due later this month, and we are anticipating seeking the maximum amount of $5 million to be matched 100% by the developers. There's no financial obligation from the city for this grant. We are strictly the applicant. I would like to point out, I noticed an error of mine on the way here, and I believe you have a corrected copy of the resolution coming to you. The last whereas of the resolution indicates that the developer will provide matching funds of $20,400,000, which includes the loan matching funds. It does not include the loan matching funds. So the developer is putting up $20 million and we're asking for an IRF grant of $4.6 million. That phrase is in the resolution twice. So with that correction, we would appreciate your support by passing a resolution of support and of course, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about that.
And this amended resolution, that's for the old Leggitts building?
That's for the Leggitts building, yes. So that's for 320 West Main. The one for 411 West Main is correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hitchens?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So we're going to do two votes. We're going to do one for 320 and then Mr. Hitchens will present 411 or okay.
Same presentation, same.
Perfect. Okay. All right. So is there a motion to adopt a resolution in support of application for 320 West Main Street, the old Leggitts building?
I'll make it.
Thank you.
But we're doing, are we voting separately?
Yes, separately. Yeah, separately. All right. So Mr. Allen, is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Hostetter, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 on the old Leggitts building. Now we'll take a second vote. Is there a motion to adopt a resolution in support of application for 411 West Main Street?
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Dr. Hostetter. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Great job presenting tonight, Mr. Hitchens.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10 is a presentation by our registrar, Jennifer, Lisa Jeffers. My gosh, I was looking at Jennifer thinking, all right, Lisa Jeffers, the general registrar regarding the election and process, and this is for informational purposes only. Thank you. Got it pointed at her computer.
The computer's up. It's the projector that's.
It's flashing yellow, not green anymore.
Yeah, it might've got turned off. It might've warmed up, I think, yeah. Might have to warm up again.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am Lisa Jeffers. I'm the Director of Elections for the City of Waynesboro. I have been here for 13 years. I began January 1, 2009. Prior to that, I was in my hometown from 1987 until the end of 2008. So I have 35 years of experience doing this. I want to give you a little update on, as I say, the ever-changing evolution of election laws, how we implemented early voting in 2020 and its impact coinciding with COVID, the ballot curing process that was implemented in 2020 as well as drop boxes and satellite offices for voting. We don't use a satellite office here in Waynesboro. We're 15 square miles and we're on the bus line, so I think pretty much everybody can get to us. Same-day registration, reporting cap. When I say cap, that's your central absentee precinct where that's the culmination of everybody that comes through my office to vote. And we will be reporting those results by precinct this year. 16-year-old registrations will also be implemented October 1 of this year. Any registered voter can vote during that 45 days of early voting. It's called early voting. Actually, it's no excuse absentee. We've always had absentee voting. You just had to provide a reason, fill out a form. That's gone away. The ID requirement, as far as photo ID, is no longer. It can be any ID, and if they have none, they can sign a statement that's called an ID confirmation statement. Voters can apply for an absentee ballot by mail a year in advance. They can either do that through our online state portal. You can request it be sent from me. A third-party group can send it to them, and trust me, they do because they get multiples and they get confused. Every election must be held, every locality must hold at least one pre-processing session of those mail-in ballots, drop-in, drop-off ballots, or in-person at least seven days prior. And this year, the canvas is going to extend even farther. It's always, you hear of Election Week. Right now, the election is not canvassed until the Friday afternoon after the election. That gives us time to process any ballots that were mailed into the office and received, postmarked on or before Election Day. So with this year's canvassing process, that will not be completed until the following Monday, November the 14th. And I bring that to your attention because everything is unofficial until that point. So it's going to be a little longer this year. With the curing process, if you voted your ballot by mail and it's received back to me and you did not complete your envelope B completely, you left your name out, you left your address, you didn't get a witness signature. We went back and forth in 2020, no need, and we're back to needing one. People get confused and it's understandable, but I have to have a witness in order to be able to count your ballot. So I have to check those out. We make sure that those ballots get back to the voter. We have to contact the voter, whether it's phone, email, and let them know what happened. We send them a new ballot. They can start the process all over. Most people are very appreciative of that. In 2020, I'd say eight to 10, 2021, five or six, in this past June primary, we had zero. Next up, we have, have to do prepaid postage that goes out to the voter. They don't have to, and they will put stamps over top of our prepaid postage. They may think it's false, I'm not sure. Photo ID was repealed, so therefore it's no more of that. The electoral board again, when they canvass till noon on Friday, but this year it will go through Monday because of the federal holiday. Early voting has always been that it's going to increase your numbers. And as you can see by this, we increased from 2016 without early voting or no excuse by 3%. The 16 stats, we had 13,162 registered, 9,222 voted, a 70% turnout, and 712 voted absentee. The 2020 stats were 14,652 registered, 10,732 voted, 73% turnout, so it's only 3% more. 6,815 voted early absentee. 4130 of those came through my office during that period, which was pretty shocking because I figured with a pandemic, my mail would have increased. And everyone, even my colleagues that I've discussed this with, it's our office that has seen the biggest impact. It's lightened the load for the election officials on Election Day. And then 2021, we have implemented the permanent absentee voter. So if you filled out your form and you filled it out as what we call a 703.1, you chose, yep, I want a ballot for every election, and if I want to vote in primaries, I choose Democrat or Republican, you're going to get a ballot for every election. Right now, we're at a little over 800 permanent. So every time that I have to have ballots out 45 days before election, it's 800 plus the postage and all that behind it. So in 2021, and then if you decide, okay, no, I didn't want to do that, you have to send to me in writing, I can't take you off of that list, just like that, I have to have your signature. So in 2021, which was a gubernatorial election, we had 53% turnout, which is pretty typical, a drop-off from presidential of 7,842 out of 14, 817 were registered at the time. And I believe the next one, not sure if I gave the absentee totals on this one. We always have the close of books forever now, and it's always 21 days prior to an election. 5:00 PM in my office or midnight online, early voting starts September 23rd, and if you don't get registered, there is now a same-day registration process in place. What that means is you will be able to come into my office, register to vote, fill out the voter registration form, but it is a provisional process. Your ballot is not going to be counted until after the election, so that gives us time to investigate to see whether or not you actually voted in another locality or if your registration should be more valid in another locality. It's not a fail-safe of, oh, I'll just skip the deadline and do this. Whoop, what did I do? So May elections, this is something new for Waynesboro. We've now moved the May elections to November. In that process, this November, we have four precincts will have eight ballot styles. Each precinct will have its own ballot. Wards A and B have only the federal because they do not have any locals. C and D have the school board and city council person, and then each ward has its federal-only ballot. Even though federal only is only on the ballot, I have to account for those in a separate way. Does that make sense to everybody? So when you want your results, it's going to take a little while, especially your precinct results will be quick as usual. For your absentee results, which are usually the largest, the tape is going to take longer because it's going to be printing by precinct. It is also going to capture every write-in, and that's going to take a while. We will also have a consolidated results tape, but we're just hoping that this goes really well. And also, beginning October 1, we will start registering 16-year-olds. They're in a holding pattern. They will not be registered. They will be in our system, but then the button to allow them to register is once they hit 18. The good thing about moving the May election to November is when you, a May election is considered a general. So if you're 17 years old, you can register to vote even though you're not turning 18 until that November. But in 2020, we had four elections. So we had the May, I mean, the March Presidential, you could vote in that even though you're 17. Then the May election hit is a general election and we had somebody show up to vote, wait a minute, I voted in March, why can't I? So this helps eliminate that as well. There could be some issues with this, mostly that the 16-year-old has moved by the time that they're 18. Election security, each electoral board and with myself, we are to produce security standards that are set by the State Board of Elections. We have to create a plan, send that to them. We also have two FA as far as accessing any of our systems, and we use the Dominion Voting System, and it's not the one that everybody has the bad name. That system is not, or that software is not allowed in Virginia. And we use the No Ink Poll Books for check-in, and I'll also be implementing print-on-demand this November only in the absentee precinct because anytime you throw an election, it's like an open invitation to a party and you don't know how many are going to show up. And to rectify all bad juju, as I call it, no voting equipment is ever connected to the internet in Virginia. And my closing remarks, and this is, elections are an ever-changing world. It is not like what it was when I walked in the door 35 years ago. We voted hundreds of voters every day for 45 days during the November 2020 Presidential. The last two weeks prior to the election, our numbers soared to 200 to over 300 a day, and I still have that documentation as a sad reminder, although it was a good reminder, it was just very stressful and hectic. And I did all of this with no modification for protection during a pandemic of the office, one part-time office worker, and thank goodness for wonderful volunteer election officials. And Waynesboro has awesome election officials, and I don't know how I would have done it without them. And the cooperation of the city guys that deliver all my equipment, they have been fabulous and as long, and as well as working with a very cooperative electoral board. Any questions?
Well, I just had one. The 703 rule.
703.1? So your application, they're all the same. If you complete by mail, an application for an absentee ballot to be mailed to you, and if you stay on there. if you say on there that you want ballots for all elections, you will have them for life.
But how do they know when your life ends and stop mailing them?
Good question. The Health Department lets me know.
Okay.
Weekly.
That was my question, does the Health Department tie in with you guys now?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Yeah, I've got a couple for you. So some takeaways, stuff that was very educational, so thank you. One was the 703.1, so I appreciate that. So what I heard, just to repeat, is absentee ballots are going to be broken out by ward.
Correct.
Moving forward, okay, that's great. Valid reasons for requesting an absentee previously, they were medical reasons or some sort of, now?
I'm traveling, business, now it's.
I don't want to. Right, okay.
Yeah, and the same thing with mail. You just fill it out saying I want it, and that's it. No reasons are required.
Okay. And then the last one was just more just kind of curiosity for the upcoming local elections in November, is that I think that the candidate cutoff window, I had a couple people ask me this, so I thought, you're here, so I'm going to ask you, is the window to file, to get on the ballot, yeah, I'm blinking.
That was June 21st.
June 21st. So is that, is that consist, is that consistent? I'm sure it is, I just don't know, I can remember when the cutoff was previously, but it seemed, some folks say, well, boy, that was really early, that, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't, you know, since the elections.
Actually, that was late. Prior to, two years ago, we, there was a lot of contentious about, contentious localities used a lot of the schools as precincts. So depending on when school starts, which Waynesboro starts tomorrow, but we're out in May, so I am vying to move the primary back to the second Tuesday. So actually, this was later, because they moved it from the second Tuesday to the third Tuesday in June.
No, I mean, to, if you wanted to apply to, you know, turn in petitions to run for.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
It's always the primary in June for November.
Okay.
I see.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. For, when we used to do it in May, was it the same?
No, 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 okay, then you fell in on the March Presidential primary.
Ah, so, okay, so it is a little bit, it's, it is earlier, y'all got, people got to get up on it a little early.
But actually, like I say, it was later, because, but now what we're running into, and we did this year, Juneteenth is the holiday before the day of the election. Where were all the city workers? Holiday. Where was I? Working.
Yeah.
And my delivery guys, because I have to be open till at least 2 o'clock for any emergency absentee.
Yeah.
So it is creating some logistical nightmares. Most school systems are out, and schools are available to be able to be, but using a school when school is in session, I totally get, is a total, it's a logistical nightmare. So with us, probably summer school has started, and I know that's what some of the other localities are running into. So moving it back to that second Tuesday is probably a smart thing, especially when you're dealing with holidays and that sort of thing.
Okay, cool, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I wanted to say thank you for your presentation. I agree, lots of educational points there, and also just thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
As this has gotten more complicated.
Absolutely.
And more stress around it.
Absolutely.
It really has taken a lot of organization.
Some of my colleagues have actually been threatened from previous elections, so, not happened to me or happened here, but.
Let's keep it that way.
It, yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jeffers, thank you very much, that was very informative. All right, item number 11 is to receive an update on the Valley Community Service Board Program and Services. Mr. Hamp.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Our guest this evening is Kimberly McClanahan. She's the Executive Director of Valley Community Services Board, who, or, excuse me, which is the primary public provider of crisis intervention, case management, substance abuse, behavioral health, mental health services in the area. They're an important partner on the front line of mental health and substance use services for the region, and we're a funding partner for them, and I'm sure you're aware that those services, for a period of time now, have been undergoing programmatic reform and funding reform, and I thought it would be a good opportunity, and actually, Ms. McClanahan asked for the opportunity to address council with some of their new strategic initiatives. But I would, would like to just acknowledge that the work that Ms. McClanahan does and her organization, constantly adjusting to fluctuating funding streams and programmatic priorities, and just a very challenging environment while trying to compete for qualified employees. It really has been a remarkable time with significant challenge, and, but they're fighting the good fight, so, welcome, thank you.
Well, thank you, and Mr. Hamp would know better than most, because he was on our board for nine years, and we have missed you this past year, but I'm sure you may not have missed us quite as much. I am Kim McClanahan, and I have been at Valley Community Services Board. It will be two years next week, so still kind of a newbie to the laws of Virginia and the ins and outs of the behavioral health system here, although I've done community mental health for many, many years in other states. So I thank you for letting me come and talk with you tonight. I do want to thank you all for the money that you provided us this year. As Mr. Hamp said, you are a funding partner per the Code of Virginia, and you, we thank you very much for that funding every year, and I really appreciate when you can provide the full 10%, because that helps us fund what we need to do. And I'll tell you a little bit about what we do with your funds in a minute. I also want to thank you for the current board members, Dan Sullivan, Deborah Freeman-Bell, Mary Powell, we have a couple of new ones who may be coming on that we haven't seen yet, but as you may know, Dan Sullivan was Board Chair for the last couple of years, and has now moved on to be Vice Chair. Deborah Freeman-Bell is our current Treasurer, so we are very delighted to have them with us. There's, I want to be brief, and I'm also low-tech here today, not, no PowerPoint, but wanted to tell you a little bit about what we've done for the citizens of Waynesboro in the past year, tell you a little bit about one of our goals of our strategic plan, talk a little bit about our budget. I'm sure y'all are familiar with the Marcus Alert legislation, and wanted to give you an update about that, whether you are or not, and want to highlight a couple of programs, and hopefully we'll do that quickly, and feel free to interrupt at any time. So in the calendar year of 2021, Valley served 1,414 people from Waynesboro. As you probably know, we actually serve four localities, Waynesboro, Stanton, Augusta County, and Highland County. And so we, and 1,414 was a slight increase in the number of people that we had seen in calendar year 2020, and we're talking 50 or so, not, not many. And the money that we receive from you all is actually used to provide medication, medical maintenance services for uninsured and underinsured citizens. This helps us to provide them with the medications that they need, and also helps offset the very expensive salaries of medical professionals, which we try to do. And I'm delighted to say that right now, we actually have a full complement of medical professionals, which is rare in any circumstance, really rare right now when we're under such a workforce shortage in any case. But I'd also like you to know that we anticipate, I call it underlosing, when we anticipate that somebody or some program is going to lose money, we, of course, budget what we think they're going to lose. This past year, Medical Services has underlost, because they were projected to lose about $300,000, and to, by the end of the year, it only lost about $66,000. So we're pretty excited about that, that we're doing well. I wanted to give you a snapshot as well of the services that we provided to the citizens of Waynesboro, and I'm just going to give you a snapshot of the month of May of 2022. So in that month, we served 127 clients from Waynesboro, and exactly the same number of males and females, 59 males, 59 females. Almost half of those clients, which I find interesting, were between the ages of three and 18. So 53 of our clients were children, essentially, children, adolescents, followed by, as you might guess, 19 to 59-year-olds, very few geriatric patients. So, but I always find it fascinating that we serve so many children and adolescents, and that's not just true here, it's also very much true in Stanton when I looked at those statistics. We provided 106 group therapy services, 119 individual therapy services, 19 family therapy services, 21 intakes, and 37 substance use intensive outpatient services. That was in the month of May, just for Waynesboro. And I might add, with a very understaffed Valley Community Services Board, because we are down in clinical staff, probably 2021 position. So I think we're doing pretty well, given the circumstances. Just in case you're interested, the most common diagnosis for people from Waynesboro was anxiety disorder, followed by major depression, and then followed by stimulant abuse. So those were kind of the three major things that we saw. About a year ago, we did strategic planning. This was the first time that we had, any strategic planning had been done in about 10 years at Valley, and one of the strategic plan goals was the fifth goal, which had to do with external partners and what we're doing with external partners, and one of the things that, you know, we want to strengthen stakeholder involvement, because I think that even though we're there, and we've been there for 50 years, a lot of people still don't know what we do and why we're there. But, you know, we are that first touch in the public mental health system, actually across the state, or the Commonwealth, excuse me, but certainly in these four localities as well. So we're hoping that, as you have assigned us board members, that you're going to see them, at least, at least one of them quarterly in the next year, to kind of, not necessarily let you know what we're doing, but to come back to us with what's happening with you guys, and then, of course, for me to come at least once a year to let you know what's going on. And last year, I believe I did it virtually, so for those of you who are here, that was kind of a different experience. So we also hope, although it hasn't happened yet, to be able to provide localities and other stakeholders with written regular updates, so quarterly, you know, one-pagers, what we're doing, to really, but we're working on, hoping to hire somebody to help with that process. We may be about there. And as is always important, talk a little bit about money. You may or may not be very familiar with the fact that a few years ago, Valley was not in very good financial shape, and I am pleased to say that is very much changed. So looking at our 22 budget, which we just finished, right, it was given to us regrettably as a duplicate of our 21 budget because of some issues with the then CFO. So it was predicted that we would end with a surplus of about $240,000, which in fact, at the end of June of '22, we actually had a surplus of $3,830, essentially. So that's a big variance. But of course, part of that is because we had probably a very inaccurate budget that we started with. On top of the fact that, you know, we also probably spent a lot less on salaries, because we did have a, obviously, in a human service profession, your major outlay is on salaries. That's, that's what we do. But even given that worker shortage, we really came out in a good place, and still has significant surplus. And right now, a year ago, we had about $6 million in the bank, and this year we have 10. And 3.6 of that has to be there, because by regulation, that we have to have at least two months' operating expenses, according to our contract with the state. So a couple of years ago, no, not a couple, three years ago, four years ago, we didn't have that. So we're really excited that we are financially doing pretty dang-on well at this point. You know, there, and that has happened over the last couple of three years, or couple of years, let me just say for FY '23, on our website, the budget is there, if you want to look at it. It was approved by the board at the June meeting. We're looking, we're thinking that we're going to have a little less surplus than 3 million, because the estimate is 1.7. We've given a 5% cost of living adjustment to all of our employees across the board, starting this month, and also, we're hoping that in January, if we're on track with the budget, we'll be able to do some market adjustments to actually bring our salaries up to something that is a bit more competitive to the private world, which we cannot compete with. We also have a very difficult time competing these days with all of those companies out there that let you sit at home and do your work on the internet. And of course, Valley, while we do provide virtual services, that is, you know, we have a lot of in-person case management, a sort of community treatment, lots of things that we do in person and need to do in person. So we lose people to these companies that say, okay, you can do all your therapy online, and they may make more, and they can be at home. So anyway, we try to compete as best we can, but I will tell you that the people who work at Valley and other community service boards, they really do it because they believe in the mission, not because they're going to get rich, because they're not. But the mission is such an important one, to help those, our folks who are most vulnerable and have the fewest resources. And as you may know, that the core of the people that we deal with are seriously mentally ill and seriously emotionally disturbed folks, and a lot of your private providers don't want to deal with those folks, because they are difficult. They are difficult folks to deal with, when they're in an episode or whatever. So we have, we had a few, I'm not going to go into this, but a few losses over some years, and we're in a good place right now, we hope to stay there. It's a sad thing to say, but when things are bad, that's good for behavioral health, because people need behavioral health services. So it's really a mixed bag, because during the pandemic, of course, we know about the stress and all of the things, the depression that went on and is still going on, and a lot of people, of course, as rightly so, sought behavioral health. There are also other reasons, I think, that we're doing so well. Medicaid expansion came to Virginia a few years ago, we do have fewer employees, I think we have done a lot better with our reimbursement efforts to get paid by Medicaid, third-party payers. I think we've seen higher productivity. We're spending prudently, and we're slowly rebuilding staff. We're not, you know, going out and saying, oh, we've got all this money, so let's do this. So we're being very cautious about how we're rebuilding, but when things got really bad, things that cut to the bone, to the point where it was almost, maybe not too much, but we're feeling the need to rebuild that slowly. Y'all are familiar with, any questions so far? Because I know I'm just blah, blah, blah. Okay. Y'all are probably familiar or heard of the Marcus Alert legislation, right, that came out a couple of years ago from the General Assembly? You're not looking like you're familiar with it.
I didn't hear what you said, what legislation?
Marcus Alert, or the Marcus David Peters Act, for the gentleman who was gunned down in Richmond, having a behavioral health episode. So the legislature decided to fix it, as they often do when it's a crisis, so they came up with legislation called the Marcus Alert System. And this was passed in 2020. It's supposed to help us do better with crisis situations, kind of co-locating behavioral health professionals with law enforcement, this kind of thing, and each community support boards are, service boards are put in five different regions. So we're, I'm in Region 1, I have eight other CSBs that are in Region 1. So in each of those five regions, somebody, one, one CSB was supposed to start Marcus Alert, and they did, and our region, it was Rappahannock Rapidan, and then others were, Rappahannock's supposed to come on next, because it's the large, you choose one, and then the next year is your largest locality in your region, that's Rappahannock. Then this year, they changed the legislation a little bit, and said, okay, well, localities that have fewer than 40,000 people don't really have to do much of this. So that simply means that in our four localities, the only locality that has to do all of it is Augusta County. There are some things that everybody's supposed to do, like getting, I'm not going to get into that tonight, but I'm happy to talk with anybody about it. There are a couple of things that everybody's supposed to do around getting a list of, like a free phone line. like a free phone line where people can get their name on a list and you can know about it ahead of time if they have crisis, that sort of thing. But anyway, the only one that has to do it fully is Augusta County. And it was also extended out longer, so we don't have to do it as soon. Last thing that I wanted to talk about is just a couple of our programs, if we have a minute. Okay? So one of the programs that we do specifically just in Waynesboro and Stanton is called the Infant Toddler Program. And that is a program that provides early intervention to children birth to age three who experience a developmental delay. So these services are provided in the homes of these families. They are in a coaching model. And in the past 11 months, I was giving this at the end of May, 130 children in Waynesboro were referred, and 91 of those children are receiving ongoing direct services. So we talk about developmental delays like walking, talking, autism, cerebral palsy, Down Syndrome, all those kinds of things that will give these people or families the ability to get these services. So regardless of the, you know, reason, this, as you might guess, the requests for services have been increasing over the past several years. Now, one of the things with early intervention is that we cannot use the funds that you all provide us, that 10%, for these services. Don't know why. It's something to do with the law that I won't claim to understand. So my developmental disability folks, I always ask when I go out, please ask if you have any extra money, we take a little bit for the Infant Toddler Program. There's some funds that come from state and federal dollars, but they never cover, it's one of those programs that I think is absolutely essential and doesn't pay its way. I mean, if we're not intervening at that age, these little guys, then we're going to have a lot more expense as they age. The other program I want to speak about real quickly because I'm sure everybody is interested in all of our substance use problems in the area. So we have, it was OBOT, now it's called OBAT, but it's an office-based addiction treatment. So it used to be just opioids, and now the A, the addiction, as opposed to the O, also includes amphetamines, alcohol. So it's just broadened its scope from opioids to other things. Right now, we have about 116 clients enrolled, and this team consists of eight staff with a nurse prac, an RN, licensed mental health professional, supervisors, care coordinators, peer support specialists. So it's a big team. They do most of the work onsite, not virtual. And these, and these folks, it's a medication-assisted treatment. So these are folks who get Suboxone to actually curb their addiction and their urges so that they can actually go out, their cravings, and not urges, their cravings, so they can go out and have, you know, get a job, work, be, provide taxes to our society to be actually successful. And we also have this program currently at Middle River Regional Jail where, as people are leaving, they can, if they decide they want to come and get help, that they can get a dose of Vivitrol, which is just a long-acting Suboxone. So they can get out of jail, get to outpatient treatment before they start with all the craving again. One of the things a lot of people don't like about Suboxone is that it doesn't give you a high like Methadone does, but it works. And it's a good, it's, you know, I, everybody has mixed feelings, I think, about whether medication-assisted treatment is okay, and it has its pros and cons, but it does work. So just, clients completed a survey at intake and then at follow-up. And in 2021, zero reported IV drug use in the last 30 days at follow-up, and that was down from 6% at intake. 35% reported using substances, reported using substances of any type, and intake, 55% reported use. And 48% reported experiencing less anxiety. That was down from 63%. So, and 30% reported depression, which was down from 43%. So getting the treatment is seemingly to be helpful and to help these folks. So I have, I will try to answer any questions you might have.
I have no questions for you, just to thank you, both from a city standpoint and a medical standpoint, that you play an important role in helping to take care of our citizens with mental health and substance use problems. And as you say, it's not, it's not easy work, but it's important work.
Thank you very much.
So very much for you and your staff.
Appreciate your time.
The Development Delay Program, you can't use the excess money you've got, the six or seven million?
Yeah, and we will.
Okay.
Use, of course, some of those dollars to sustain it, absolutely. So you don't have to go home and feel bad. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. This brings us to item number 12, and item number 12 is to consider appointing a candidate to the Library Board of Trustees for an unexpired, four-year term ending August 31, 2024. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Eric Anderson is presented for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to, or is there any questions? Mr. Hamp first. Nope. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Eric Anderson to the unexpired term on the Library Board of Trustees?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. Item number 13 is to consider reappointing a member of the Historical Commission for a four-year term ending August 31, 2026. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. David Geiger is presented for your consideration.
Great, great candidate for that. Any questions? Is there a motion to appoint David Geiger?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dr. Haas Sutter. Any discussion?
Just to thanks David for years of service and all that he does on the commission.
And I agree. I mean, this is a thankless job that he's done, but he volunteers every time.
He's so committed.
Thank you, David. Is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you all very much. Item 14, communications correspondence and calendar. Mr. Hamp?
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Okay. And then item number 15 is our citizen comment period. Has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For those that are signed up tonight, you've got four minutes to come up and talk to council. When you talk, you're giving your comment or what you want council to know. We won't be responding back to you or giving you answers to anything tonight. The green light will come on, giving you the start time. When it turns yellow, you've got about 30 seconds to wind down when it turns red. We ask that you step away, please.
Ms. Evelyn Cotton?
Someone who knows the rules very well.
Yes. Thank you all for hearing me this evening and for doing your jobs this evening. Wanted to just say thank you again on the 14th Street project. Went over to the library meeting this evening and got my questions answered and also got an answer on the fact that we're not adding any four-way stops at the intersections, which are currently two-way stops. And everywhere there's a two-way stop, that means the 14th Street traffic is through traffic and does not stop. And I still want to advocate for changing that. I don't think there's a whole lot involved at some point, even if it's not part of this project. I honestly think that that would make a humongous difference in slowing down traffic because it will divert traffic over to 13th Street for that through traffic going, I guess that's more east-west than anything else. So I want to encourage that. And I also heard from one of the persons there that that funding cannot be used for pedestrian safety elsewhere in the city. So I still want to urge the council to consider adding a pedestrian crosswalk somehow at the, on Rossar, at the intersection where the Martins entrance is to Martins and Walmart together, not the Lucy Lane. I understand they will be doing something there, but all the foot traffic I see crossing Rossar crosses right there at Martins, and they come from that neighborhood. So I'm not sure they're going to walk all the way up to Lucy to come back down, and there's not a sidewalk anyway. But I understand the difficulties now because they explained to me, you've got to be ADA compliant. You can't just put in a crosswalk unless you have sidewalks, and that's a shame. But please keep that on your, in the back of your minds for pedestrian safety because I think that's really important at that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But thank you. The project's beautiful on 14th.
Jeremy Sloot?
Good evening, Council. My name's Jeremy Sloot. I'm 920 Dogwood Circle. Really short and sweet, just a couple of concerns. The paving on Charlotte is really nice, but we don't understand why they stopped about 200 yards short of the light, and it looks like palms were dropped through the road after the gas company went through. And secondly, with school about to start, just wondering why it's been over a month since we've been able to get or haven't gotten paint down on the new paved roads, especially at that intersection at Broad. You know, my daughter got her learner's permit, and she did not realize it was a turn-only lane on the left-hand side. Scared the snot out of me. So if, you know, if we have any information on that for the residents, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And I think we can give that information there, Mr. Hamp, don't you?
Sure, yes. Just as a matter of concern, we recognize that the period of time between when we mill and pave and when we are able to restripe the roads can be sort of mysterious and challenging. But the two different vendors provide those services, and we're at the mercy of the painting contractor when we let that contract as to when they can return to the community to do that. So it's not intentional, and we tried our best to schedule and coordinate, but we're really, it's a function of how quickly we can have the vendor come and provide those services. There's a limited number of those vendors, and they're working across the Commonwealth. Everybody's paving at the same time. So that's the challenge. We're not trying to make life difficult, and we appreciate folks' patience and attention as we work through that period.
And he answered that so well because I had the same concern. I went to him about it.
That's all we have, sir.
Okay. Item number 16 is to have a closed session. And just so that everyone knows, when we go into closed session tonight, because the folks that are going to be here, we're going to close down the meeting room and ask the citizens to go ahead and leave so that we can have our closed session in here. Okay?
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move this meeting be recessed and that the City Council of Waynesboro immediately reconvene in a closed meeting for the following purposes. Discuss the expansion of business or industry where no previous announcement has been made, the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, the consultation with the city attorney regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, all as authorized by Sections 2.2-3711A 5, A 3, and A 8, respectively. The subject matter of the closed meeting is Nature's Crossing Technology Center. Furthermore, for consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body session as authorized by Virginia Code Section 2.2-2711A 7, the subject matter of the closed session is an employment-related matter.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Ms. Bordle, this requires a roll call vote.
Mayor Henderson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Lana?
Aye.
Councilman Allen? Councilman Short?
Aye.
Councilman Haas Sutter?
Aye.
Perfect. We move to closed session. Perfect. We move to closed session.
I bring the council back into session after a closed meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas the City Council of Waynesboro has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this city council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Waynesboro hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters were exempted, were lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meetings which the certification resolution applies, and number two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of Waynesboro.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call vote, Ms. Boardle.
Is the Vice Mayor still here?
Lanny, you're still with us, aren't you?
I'm here.
Yeah, they've got our seat built at the seat.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Short?
Aye.
Councilman Hostetler?
Aye.
All right. That brings us to item number 17. And item number 17, is there a motion during this meeting?
I would like to make that motion.
Mr. Allen, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Short, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. This meeting's a jam.
Thank you.
I love hitting that hammer thing.